I'd like to call to order the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. We'll have the invocation by Reverend James Thurington, Pastor W., Evangel, Fellowship Church, 717 West Harrison Street, Greensville, North Carolina.
Let us pray. Do tell about our fathers, we come before your presence on this evening. Thank you for this day that you have made and we are joyous and we're being glad. And Paul said, "Thank you for all of the city, the citizens of Greensville, and the citizens of Rockingham County. We pray for our mayor tonight and our vice mayor, all of our members of the city council, city manager, chief of police, fire chief, and all our elected officials. Thank you for the peace that we have in our city. And we give you honor and glory for that. And God, we pray especially tonight for Israel. Pray for the peace of Jerusalem. Then God, as our leaders come to discuss, decide, and instruct us as citizens, pray God to a guide their thoughts, give them clarity of speech, give them understanding, God. They were elected to serve these citizens, and they're doing a great job. Bless our city council meeting tonight. Keep us... Thank you for the spirit of peace that's devised in this building and during the meeting tonight. You give your name glory, your name honor, and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will we all stand for the pledge?
Uh, pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge and say. Proclaimations and recognitions. We have special proclamation for Bryce Kane, and some challenge coins, and some goodies along with him. Bryce recently graduated from Regional High School, and we felt like he would need a job, got in contact with him, and discussed that he'd like to be Public Works Director. So we made him our honorary Public Works Director. And he finished up his job today with no problem. I asked him if he had to fire anybody, and he said, "Not today." And we also have recognition of the Fire Department for Fire Prevention Week and National Community Planning Month. We'll start with the Public Works Director. Bryce, if you will step up here. It's gonna be alright, I won't bite you. I, Donald L. Gorham, on behalf of Regional City Council, do hereby proclaim that Bryce Kane has been named the City of Greensville's Honorary Public Works Director for a day. Bryce fulfilled his duties in his official capacity with distinction. Throughout his time on the job, he met with employees, reviewed equipment inventory, and visited various sites, including the Penn House, uh, House Event Center and the Splash Pad, both under construction. In doing so, he has helped continue the city's Public Works Department's strong tradition of service to the local community. In humble appreciation, we thank him for his invaluable service to the city of Greensville and its residents this the tenth day of October 2023. Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Greensville. Bryce, you got anything you'd like to say? His parents are here, and his brother's here, and his, I guess, best friends here. Would any of you like to say anything? Any words?
Uh, thank y'all.
Okay. Thank y'all. The loneliness to us for a while. Bryce. Bryce, the popo has a little gift for you. For those of you who know what the popo is, it's police. Challenge coins in here.
Yeah.
Goodie bag.
Yeah.
That's pretty hip. I might better tote that for you. Go back to your seat. Oh, come on back, let's get a picture. I'm not gonna bite you. Let's give Bryce another big round of applause. I'll give you a call sometime soon and see how you evaluate everything that went on. Next, we have the recognition of the Fire Department and Fire Safety Month. Is the chief here? Oh, there he is. Come on up, chief. As you bring your elbows up, the other guy's up too. Now I feel safe. Whereas the Regional Fire Department is dedicated to the safety of the citizens, especially protecting life and property from the devastating effect of fires. And whereas those members of the fire service are joined by other concerned citizens of this city, as well as businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in their fire safety efforts. And whereas, while this special week has been set aside to remind everyone of the importance of fire education, we should remember to practice fire safety throughout the year. Now therefore, being resolved that I, Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Greensville, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through October 14th as Fire Prevention Week in Greensville. And I further call upon the residents of this city to participate in fire prevention activities at home, work, and school, and to heed the message of the 2023 Fire Prevention Theme: Cooking safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire safety prevention. Since the tenth day of October 2023, Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Greensville, Chief.
I won't take up too much of your time, but thank you for officially recognizing this week as the official Fire Prevention Week here for the City of Greensville. Uh, we at Greensville Fire Department take fire protection and fire prevention very serious. Uh, we have several programs, uh, to assist individuals with both fire protection and fire prevention in residential and commercial offices. The theme this year is actually kind of fitting because commerce, uh, not commercial, but cooking fires is actually the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries, uh, not only at the national level, but here locally. So, uh, if you have any fire safety issues, concerns, uh, if we can help you with any type of fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, or answer any fire safety questions, give us a call, we'd be happy to help you.
Man, I got a question for the chief. Let me ask you, say, cooking is the greatest cause of fire?
Cooking fires is the leading cause of home fires.
You know, that'll come to my house.
Uh, keep supporting local restaurants.
And chief, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm known for putting people on the spot, so now it's your turn. Since you are front and center, would you please tell everyone about your recycling cans and what the money for that goes to?
Yes, ma'am. So, we do have a recycling trailer out back, uh, 402 South Scale Street, our headquarters station, uh, our headquarters fire station, Station 1. Uh, so if any of you all recycle aluminum cans, uh, feel free to bring them, drop them off. We recycle those, take them to foster cycle and get the money, and then we contribute to the child, the Children's Burn Center once a year. So it's a, it's a great cause, financial cause to support the Children's Burn Center.
Thank you.
And chief, I let the cat out of the bag today. Can I let it out to the whole community?
Sure.
Our chief is gonna be a dada. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Y'all take care, dada. Jason, would you come forward? Let Heywood back there hide behind you.
He's back in the corner.
Oh, Jason's okay. Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, counties, communities, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and lead it. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningful and to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of our community. And whereas, full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association is it and its, uh, professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planers, endorses National Planning or National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, uh, sound planning and plan implementation made to the quality of our settlements and environment. The celebration... I got a little, little off here. The celebration of National Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise for the improvement of the city of Greensville, North Carolina. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional planners of the city of Greensville and extend our heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Greensville, hereby designate October 2023 as Community Planning Month in the city of Greensville, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Greensville, Jason, do you have anything to say?
Uh, sure. We greatly appreciate the support of all of our elected officials, uh, our community, uh, everyone who's been a planning board member, has been a planner for Greensville. Community planning is vital, in my opinion, uh, to ensure that the community has a say in how it develops and also maintain quality development, and basically always seeing where you're going. Because if you don't see where you're going, you kind of make spur decisions, and you don't have a guide to kind of get you along the way to where you want to be. So, uh, we really appreciate everyone, thank you.
To our, uh, Public Works Director, I know you've had a hard... No, you said that, that was true. But you don't have to sit through it.
It's the one for her seven years old and four.
If you would, if you would give us enough of these special thoughts about today, I would like to really acknowledge that staff and all the work they did today. You, the whole staff, I think, I knew you all along until you all did a great job, and you exceeded my greatest expectations. This is really a special day for a very special young man.
Yeah.
We love you. And you and I share something. You've got a caring brother, just like I have. So I met your brother on a couple occasions, and he loved you as much as we did. We wish you the very best.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
It's just an honor, uh, to have you in our presence today, and we certainly wish you long future and, uh, just...
Bryce, I'm the, you know, everybody, every class has a clown, and I am it with all these distinguished people up here. I'm the clown. Remember I asked you what the best part of today was? And it was so many things that you couldn't think. And I told you what my favorite part was, was the police escort and the sirens going around and loudness and everything, because there was something that was really louder than me. And it was, the best part was when they are in front of you instead of behind you, chief. It makes a big difference. But thank you, you're an inspiration to us, and, uh, we do appreciate everything you have done for us today. And, um, you need to think about something else that you'd like to do, and give us a call and let us know.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you too, and I was very impressed when you, when you said that. I sat on the side of you and you said, "I'm gonna be a surgeon." Now, you know where you want to be at your young age, and I think that's very impressive. Keep, keep looking forward and honor your dreams.
And certainly, I can only just piggyback on it. It's already been said, we're surgeons, and I'm a dreamer. Thank you for what you do. You know, you're just a special person, and we, we love you. We thank you. Thank you.
And just thank you so much, uh, Mr.
And just thank you so much, uh, Mr. Shannon, for allowing us and Bryce to spend the day together, and Noah, it's been a privilege to get to know you and, and Bryce, your brother, your family, and your community. We love you, and we're so thankful that you shared your day with us, and I hope we exceeded your expectations. So thank you for being part of Team Reevesville today.
Man, if I could add one other comment, when you call out people, you always forget somebody. I think I'd be with this if I didn't talk about Josh and public works people, that everybody can figure a lot, but then, yeah, he's been with him all day, and he's probably, probably last, still my lifetime, remember his, but, uh, thanks a lot.
Josh, you have anything you'd like to say? He's gonna evaluate you one day, so.
Just like you said, I hope Bryce had a good time.
If you got one, we'll leave it.
Mayor, oh, thank you.
She loves a hat, and there were that candy.
See it, Chief?
You got a full of candy in there.
Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of September twelve, twenty twenty-three regular minutes, enclosure one. There are no corrections. I'll take a motion. No discussion, though all those in favor, raise your hand. Next, we have a public hearing. Consideration of an application to rezonate property at twenty-two six Woodrow Street, specifically Rockingham County Tax Parcel, fourteen ninety-nine eighty-nine, from general business to residential six. Uh, Mary Ann, uh, Charaba? Charaba?
Charaboga.
Charaboga, okay. Charaboga. The property owner submitted the application, Z twenty twenty-three dash four one, enclosure two, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager. Uh, Mary Ann Charaboga, petition to rezonate two twenty-six Woodrow Street, Rockingham County Tax Parcel number one four nine nine eight nine, up in general business to residential six. Parcel encompasses, the parcel encompasses an area of twenty thousand nine hundred and eight square feet or point four eight acres. The existing land use is a legal non-conforming, uh, single-family home that was built on a general business zone lot, but we do allow residential structures in general business. However, it does require a special use permit, and this house was built in nineteen ten. Therefore, it was built for the ordinance, so even though there are allowed a special use permit, we get permitted, so therefore it is legal non-conforming technically. So, uh, uh, the surrounding land use is a mix of commercial, uh, general business and also residential sits, uh, on the street across from where this parcel is located. Uh, the area to the south is also a mixture of general business and residential sits. Uh, to the east, north, and west, the abandoned lots are also, the abandoned lots are also zoned, uh, general business. Overall, it's kind of a collage of different zoning districts, about two or three. Uh, considering the mix of zoning districts surrounding the property and its contiguous direction to residential sits, uh, we find that the rezoning is reasonable. Uh, the property is located in Growth Management Area One from the twenty twenty-two land development plan the council adopted, and Growth Management Area One prioritizes high-density commercial development and the, um, the expansion of residential alternatives. It doesn't specifically mention, uh, single-family homes, however, uh, we think the intent of the plan, uh, does not mean including single-family development from that Growth Management Area. Therefore, we find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the twenty twenty-two Reevesville Land Development Plan, and that the zoning is reasonable and in the public interest. Uh, planning staff recommend the proposed rezoning be approved, and planning board managers recommend that rezoning be approved as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
The question is finished. Uh, the public hearing will open at six twenty-seven. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak forward? A special question.
Oh, hi, good evening.
Come on up. Come on, fly. Name and address.
Good evening. My name's Mary Ann Charaboga. Um, uh, my husband and I moved here, uh, to Reevesville from South America about a little over a year ago. Um, we bought this house that was, like Jason said, built in nineteen ten, ended up, um, gutting about half of it. So we're just in the process of putting it back together, and we wanted to put a deck on. So when I called for permits, they said, you're, uh, zoned general business, and you either have to spend six hundred dollars for a special use permit, or you can get rezoned for six hundred dollars. So, to build our deck and to do some improvements to the house and the, and the yard, um, we opted to try to get it rezoned.
Could you give the address?
It, I, it's twenty, it's two two six, two hundred twenty-six, uh, Woodrow. It's, um, right across from the American Legion, sort of behind the elevator store. And, um, it's a great location. We see deers in our backyard. Every week, we see some deers, because on one side is all woods, quite a bit of woods, and, um, the other side, there are two empty houses, but, um, it's very pleasant. Be nicer to see the deers if we had the deck on the back. So, am I excused?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I would like to thank you for relocating from South America to Reevesville.
Oh, thank you.
Very much impressed. Thank you so much.
It was almost like, um, opened them out and put our finger down, and we hit Reevesville. We knew we wanted to be in North Carolina. I have a, I have at times lived in North Carolina, and I have a brother in Pittsboro. So, uh, we knew we wanted to be in North Carolina, and, um, we've been real pleased with Reevesville, yeah, like the area. My husband works at Unified, and I work at Annie Penn, and, um, we enjoy the community quite a bit.
And I'm sure your employers are glad you're here also.
Oh, yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Are the other two houses occupied?
Pardon me?
Are the other two houses occupied?
No, they're, they're vacant right now, but someone comes in and, uh, maintains them and does the grass, I'm assuming the owner, um, keeps the, the yard and the house, um, up to date.
Thank you for taking the initiative to fix that old house up.
I know, it's fun, yeah. It's a lot of fun. Except that it costs money. That's not the fun part, but.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak forward? Is there anyone who'd like to speak again? Seeing none, the public hearing will close at six thirty-one.
I'd like to make a motion to specify rezoning to be approved.
Second?
There's a special motion that needs to be read.
Oh, yeah.
It's near the back of you.
Oh, I see it.
Oh, okay. So, uh, to amend that motion to. Oh, yeah. Okay, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to recommend the rezoning to be approved for the specified parcels to the test on any district based upon the consistency and reasonableness of determination states that all included in the board package, agenda package submitting during the rezoning presentation, and as the amendment incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion on second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, raise your hand. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation. City of Reevesville Certification as a Family Forward Employer, enclosure three, and basing a Human Resources Director.
Mr. Mayor and Manager, ladies and gentlemen, City Council, how good it is to be here. I came and spoke to y'all several months ago and asked for your support for the City of Reevesville to move towards certification as a Family Forward Employer in North Carolina. And please report to you tonight that we are the first municipal government in North Carolina to receive this recognition, and I am thrilled. We have, um, some work to do as far as a press release, and we will start using, there are some medallions that we can place on social media, our webpage, the jobs portal, so as people apply for jobs, everybody will now begin to see the Family Forward Certification, and that certification is good for two years. So I've got an abbreviated, part of this process was to submit the application, and then we had to have some, a percentage of our employees respond to an anonymous survey. So what I'm gonna do is to approve some of the survey results. You have the entire results in your packet, but I've got an abbreviated version that we're gonna touch on tonight. If, as you are looking through the full information, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or to Summer for more information. So it did require that twenty-five percent of our employees participate in the survey, and we had sixty-one respond, which is thirty-three percent of our employees, so I was really excited about that. It was a very short survey, it only took about five minutes to complete. When we get to the very end, I'll talk to you about what our next steps are based on the responses to these surveys. So the first group of slides was how satisfied are employees with our benefits and our policies that are family-forward? And you can see that they feel very well-educated. We got ninety-seven percent of our employees that believe that they have been well-educated about benefits and policies. They feel confident that they can use the benefits that have been provided to them. We've got ninety-eight percent of them that are comfortable using their benefits. This one I included, this is the living wage for our area, uh, it's sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents an hour. Of the respondents, ninety percent make that or more. We do have ten percent that make less than that. Now, some of these could be part-time employees that may make only twelve dollars an hour. I don't know who responded, they did not provide me that kind of great real detail. So some of these could be part-timers, but some of them could be full-time employees that are still making less than sixteen eighty-three an hour. Um, the next had to do with how satisfied are they with our paid leave policies and the way we approve paid leave. Uh, this did include, again, some part-time and some full-time. None of our part-time employees are eligible for any paid leave. So if there's some, some of these results may be a little skewed by the part-timers that aren't eligible. This is a parental school involvement leave, so the North Carolina.
You might go back to your previous slide.
Absolutely.
A little more surprised by the responses, given that.
Yeah, and we go through these, I'm gonna talk to you about that. So this is the first one that was surprising to me, because under the North Carolina General Statute, we are required to allow an employee four hours of leave annually to participate in school activities. It could be parent-teacher conferences, it could be a special program, it could be a sporting event, it could be a chaperone field trip. We are required to do that annually, and I think part of this is not that there's a problem with the policy, it's just that we've not done a really good job telling our employees, hey, you've got this four hours of leave available. Now, our current policy, that is unpaid leave unless they want to use their own available vacation time or partial holiday time. They can make it paid leave, but they do need to use their balances. So I was surprised that over twenty percent of our folks, uh, said we don't offer this kind of leave, but we do, we just haven't told them that we offer. Paid leave related to parenting, the next slides are related to our employee satisfaction with paid leave for the care of their children. Uh, we both, we, we do offer a paid paternity leave and a paid maternity leave. This is another situation where we got this, when we did all that work last year on the personnel policy, and we were redeveloping all of those leave plans, somehow we managed to overlook paternity and maternity leave. It is not outlined in the personnel policy, even though we do offer it. So I have rewritten that section of the policy, and probably in January, February, when we get together for the budget retreat, we'll talk more specifically about the changes to our personnel policy. We'll get your approval for the, the changes so that they will know. But we do offer this leave. Again, it, I think it's just a challenge that we've not done a really good job communicating, and we did manage to leave this one out of our personnel policy. In addition to the paid or unpaid leave for maternity and paternity leave, any employee that's been here at least twelve months and has worked at least twelve hundred and fifty hours is eligible for up to twelve leave, twelve weeks of SNLA protected leave for the birth of a child, for the adoption of a child, for the placement of a foster child, that's federal law, and we do comply with that. Again, I think it's, we just haven't done a really good job explaining to our employees, you've got this benefit available. Uh, so here's the, the slide on maternity leave, and you can see that almost ten percent of our employees are unaware that we offer that program. Uh, we've got about ten percent that are either dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with the existing policy, and it may be because we're not giving them time to use for maternity or paternity leave. If they want it to be paid, they have to use their available leave. Uh, paternity, same thing, we've got fifteen percent that don't know that we offered new dads the opportunity to take some time off to be with the baby. Um, we're working on improving our communication with our employees, and we've got about eight percent that are dissatisfied, very dissatisfied with the existing policy. Scheduling policy, this is a little different. During the pandemic, a lot of organizations came up with really creative ways to do work from home, telecommute, flexible scheduling, compressed work week. The nature of our business doesn't allow us to do that. It's really hard to be a firefighter from your living room. So we can't have some of the same flexibility that other employers have with scheduling. There are some areas where we may be able to do some things that will make our employees more appreciative, and we'll work some on that between now and the budget retreat in the early winter. Uh, work from home, remote, remote work, you can see there's fifty-three percent that say we don't offer this. We did do a little of this during the pandemic. If that's something that y'all want us to look at offering more frequently for those positions where it might be available, we can certainly take that as a takeaway for me and the city manager. Uh, compressed work week, that's. Uh, compressed work week, that's where you're working instead of the same number of days, ev, the same number of hours every day. Maybe you work nine hours the first four days of the week and you do a half a day on Friday. That's what a compressed work is, compressed work week is. We do not currently offer that, uh, again, something that we can look at if that's something you have desire for. Pregnant worker accommodation. This summer, late this summer, August, um, there's some new federal regulations regarding protection of pregnant workers in the workplace. We're doing all of this, but again, we've gone back, we've adjusted to the personnel policy. It's now about wording in it specific to that new federal regulation, which is being administered by the EEOC to protect the pregnant worker in the workplace. It's basically allowing them more breaks if they need more breaks, allowing them to eat or drink at their workstation. If you normally have a provision that says you can't eat or drink at your workstation if they're pregnant, we would make amends to allow them to eat. We don't restrict that in any of our environments, which can't have food or drink at the workstation. Currently, our employee population is just under twenty-one percent, which is low. I think a lot of these other organizations probably are the other way where they've probably got twenty-one percent of male employees. I've been here a little over five years, I am aware of three female employees that have been pregnant during my tenure and I actually reached out to all three of them and talked to them about their experience and they did feel like we were very supportive to them during the pregnancies. They would like to see some additional paid time for all those pre-pregnancy, post-pregnancy visits. You don't have to go to the doctor frequently, they have to have lab results drawn frequently, they may need to have ultrasounds. They would like to see some additional paid leave for pregnancy and I think our, our husbands of pregnant women that are not necessarily, necessarily are employees might also be interested in that as a, a future benefit. Uh, breastfeeding workers, of the three that have had children since I've been here, two of them did manage to collect breastmilk during the day. Uh, the other one did not want to, uh, was not interested in breastfeeding, the baby immediately went on formula and that's a personal decision. But the two that did opt to breastfeed felt like their supervisors and their work area was very conducive and it did allow them privacy, a place to store the breast milk, the time necessary to express the breast milk during their workday. Um, we don't have a formal policy on that, but you can see that we're very responsive when our employees have a need. We've got supervisors and department directors that have been empowered to make those kinds of decisions. We do not have a specific policy for it. It says doesn't offer this type of leave, it really should say doesn't offer this type of policy because we don't have a formal policy. If it became a challenge in the future, I think it would probably fall under the pregnant worker protections that is coming under the EEOC and we would have to look at such other reasonable accommodations. Um, I just threw this in here, I am not by any stretch of the imagination suggesting that we allow our people to bring their babies to work, but you can see that sixty-four percent are aware that we do not allow children to come in the workplace. I think our hazards at our workplaces are just entirely too hot. I don't think there's any really good way to address that. Uh, childcare support, at the beginning of the pandemic, we did some really creative things. We worked with Hany Penn and we worked with the childcare center at Woodmont UMC and with the YNCA to make sure that our essential employees that had to come to work, whose childcare's were closed, had the ability to reach out to these other facilities and we, we agreed that our guys would, and gals would have a priority. And throughout the pandemic, we had not a single employee take advantage of that. Um, so these, these next couple of slides, again, were a little surprising to me because we've made this available in the past and it hasn't been utilized by our employees. Childcare at an onsite facility, obviously we don't have that. Um, I'm not suggesting that we do that. Uh, I am not a childcare person, I don't know what kind of legislative and regulatory hoops you would have to go through to open a childcare, not something I'm suggesting, but I did want you to see that, our employees, at least, no, we don't have a childcare on the side. Uh, emergency backup childcare, this is what we were using during the pandemic. I think this might be something that we wanna continue, reach back out to Woodmont and YNCA so that we've got that resource available. Uh, and then satisfaction with health and wellness overall, I think our employees were very, very satisfied with our existing benefits. You can see we've got a huge number of our employees that are very happy with our medical insurance. We do have about ten percent that are dissatisfied. We are with the North Carolina League of Municipalities, our health insurance is offered through MedCost. They announced last week that the league is moving away from MedCost, so we will have new insurance coming in July of twenty twenty-four. That may change these numbers, uh, to be well informed as necessary. Uh, they do really like our mental health and VAT benefits. Uh, you can see we've only got three and a half percent that are dissatisfied. Flexible spending account. I've got some work to do here, I've got sixty percent of the folks that don't know we allow them to do a flexible spending account. So again, HR needs to carry some water and educate our employees. And then the opportunity for the employees to commit to any of the previous topics. So the last question was kind of a wide-open question, hey, what else would you like us to know going through the certification process? I put it in this format so that we can put it up here and you can see that the big ones are telework and flex scheduling, childcare support and maternity, paternity leave. What you have in your packet is actually their written responses. I tried to bring things into categories so that I could give you a percentage recommendation, uh, but you've got actually what they responded on that survey. And that's everything, if you've got any questions, I am happy to entertain those questions.
I guess we're more concerned that the question is, I mean, as long as we've got the best thirty-three percent of our employees, it's hard for me to really say that, but I ain't understand much what this survey really indicates to me. If you only got thirty-three percent of our, all the thirty-three percent of our people before, we're forty-nine percent of people.
Yes, sir.
I think we only got sixteen more.
Yeah. I, I think that's a valid concern. We did do an employee engagement survey in my first year here and we had much better responses. I think that we probably do need to look at another survey for the entire employee population and tell them you've got to complete this survey so we can privacy.
Well, I like the instrument, but it just seems to me, I don't know whether we had more management, department encouraged to take the time to do it, were they allowed to do this on, on duty?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you have a reason, do you have a feeling yourself why there's nothing better to find?
I think it wasn't a high priority to most of our employees.
How long a period of time did they have to complete the survey?
We originally gave them two weeks, we did not meet the twenty-five percent requirement at the end of two weeks, so we opened it up for another ten days and that's when we got to the thirty-six.
Were they allowed to take the survey home and complete it?
No, it was online and I think that may be part of it, all online, yes, sir.
You did it like that.
Yeah.
If you think about a lot of our population.
You're exactly correct. You're exactly correct, we've got.
I think that was a huge.
We've got a third of our employees. Yep.
You may have, you may have been nailed while we didn't do that at the front.
I think you're exactly right.
Thank you. That's all.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Um, one of the comments that I read was, um, cheaper healthcare and more paid sick leave. Now, the cheaper healthcare, would that be for the family?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and, okay, the family instead of the person employed by the city of Reevesville?
Yes. Because we pay a hundred percent for our employee coverage and they pay for their dependent and spouse coverage.
Thank you.
Your offer.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate you doing this, but that's great, thank you.
I want to say, thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of various amendments to chapter ten, ministry utilities and service of the city, city's code ordinances related to refuse collection, large trash pickup and industrial waste and the addition of a new section dealing with the sale of compost. It's only for Josh Drake Public Works Group.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
So quite a bit of changes, if you took the time to read all the various changes in the solid waste. Um, strictly, it's something that I kind of noticed and observed when I first was hired here. Um, so I started in April, but then Gary Trent retired on the course about this month, about this time a year ago. Uh, and then we were fortunate to hire Edward Shelton and so I wanted to give him some time to get familiar and then get an opportunity to discuss some of these. So I won't read each one, but I'll certainly answer any questions that you have about particulars. But really, as, as kind of outlined in my memo, I'll go over the goals of each changes. Um, some of them are very simple typos, right, we're changing the verbiage in a few of them from the ninety gallons, which was the older size container, which was the max allowable to ninety-six, that's just a simple, a text amendment, if you will. Um, the other one that I wanted, um, and we'll pass this around to you, one of them is, of course, on return trip. Um, this is a camera system that we have issued out, uh, that goes on our sanitation truck. Uh, we have this particular one running right now, it's a pilot project from a company called Sky Eye View. Um, and again, when we made them two-on-twos, I talked to you about, you know, right now, if, if Miss Water claims that we didn't pick up the trash can, we really have no means or methods to know that. Um, this particular system offers four cameras on those trucks, the front, we actually do both sides and then we have a direct shot of the house so that when the next time Miss Water says, hey, you missed my trash, we can actually click on the truck and you'll see the image of the location. I think it was, uh, maybe on Vance Street at the time I took this photo. But it will allow, uh, Edward and Dale to go back quickly to view that particular address without sitting there and giving hours of footage and see that particular footage as it drives by that particular house and see real-time in-person, if you will, that, yes, that trash can was out and this is a, is an issue on our end or no, I see the trash can at the end of Miss Water's driveway and it was not out. We will gladly come back and get that, but we're gonna charge you a return trip fee. Uh, I think we all probably know that gas and fuel prices are still very high and these aren't hybrid vehicles that we're known to pick up trash, so they, they tend to burn a lot of diesel. So we're trying to cover that cost. Uh, obviously, when we get these calls, we're not gonna pull that truck away from its current route so that it's backtracking at the very end of the day. So that's a means and method that we want to try to prohibit some of this that we think is either failure on the tenant or possibly even refilling the trash can on the Sunday to try to get a secondary free, uh, tip, if you will. So, uh, so that's one of them. Another one that's in here embedded is the rollback policy. I know Mayor and I've had some, some issues on a particular street or two. I know that's a very hot topic. This, again, is on a, a, this is on a, uh, an issue base, right? We're not going out and policing this, this is only when we get calls and complaints that we'll look into this situation. And I have, obviously, after multiple repeat issues, then we will look at fines. We're, we're not the solid waste police, I don't mean, but, uh, police chief, that, that, the police. So, uh, that's one of the other goals. The other one of concern, again, was that there was no real limitation on, on debris and pickup. I, I believe the ordinance is written so that if we have a small thunderstorm or you wanna do some annual trimming, that we will pick those sort of things up. But if I'm a developer and I wanna throw everything out to the road and I clear ten acres, I don't think that's what the city's responsibility is to call that out. So we're doing a limitation of three yards, which is still a, a much more than the pickup truck load. Uh, and then we also put the caveat that if we do have an ice storm or a significant storm and we wanna relax those rules for that period of time, we have the ability to do that immediately, you know, on a citywide basis. And then the, the other big one in here is, is really about ensuring that the trash you provide is in your trash can. I know that sounds like kind of, not fairly straightforward, but believe it or not, we have a lot of citizens that will put trash beside it, push trash, you actually on top of the lid. Uh, I know I showed a PowerPoint to you guys about that. And what that actually does is it causes two trucks to make that route. And so what's the efficiency in that when I'm having to send two trucks around to do the same job? So if, uh, we want, you know, have a little better enforcement of that, allow our bandit trucks, which is our primary vehicle for, for picking up trash, to go through and do that. If a resident needs a secondary trash can, certainly call public works. Generally, we get it out the same day to them. Uh, it will reflect a second tip fee on their, uh, water, water and sewer bill. But at the same time, we all have to remember that the city is paying those tip fees when we drop all that trash off at the can. So we also need to collect that, uh, funding to offset the cost that the city has returned. So, and then finally, we talked a little bit about this as well. Uh, we do, uh, we've got quite a bit of compost out the yard now, certainly putting that out there if anybody needs some. Um, but we spend about five or six thousand dollars a year screening that. That doesn't include our time that we actually turn it throughout the whole year. Um, but we wanna do a small minimal charge to kind of re-collect some of those fees that we wound up paying, uh, to screen and get some of the things that we wouldn't want, you know, distributed in somebody's yard. So it's a good clean product. Um, again, it costs us about five grand and we feel with the charges in here, we'll get at least some of that back, maybe not all of it. We think it's a good service to offer. It's certainly a lot better deal than if you go to Lowe's or Home Depot and you get the bag of, you know, one cubed foot or whatever, uh, for probably ten dollars, we'll give you a yard for the same cost. So, uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, uh, if you may.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I feel like there's probably a lot of citizens that are probably interested in getting a second trash can. And if so, what would the cost be on that and how would that be, um, charged?
Yes, sir. So the first thing that we get charged is the sixty-five dollars for the can itself. That's a direct cost that we pay, we, you know, we don't make anything over that. Uh, and then it's six dollars and some change per tip fee, so that would get added to the monthly fee. And with, like I said, if you call public works, we'll make the work board, we'll deliver that trash can to you and then we'll notify finance to add that to your water and sewer bill. Try to make it as easy as you can.
Do you know about the cost of return trip fee?
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars.
And again, we're just trying to recover some of that fuel cost and a little bit of labor on top of that. But, you know, potentially we're on the other side of the city by the time that route is completed. So it should be a significant amount of time to come back across town and fuel to do that. Plus wear and tear on a very large expense of fuel.
Yes, sir. How did you have, you get those calls, complaints?
Quite frequent, um, maybe three, four times easily a week, uh, sometimes more. And again, it, it, some people very honest to tell us, I just forgot and I guess I'm a polite person, I'm much more lenient to, all right, we'll get out there, we'll get this, it will be the end of the day, but we'll get it. Um, but we do have, you know, my, my staff, you know, some people that, that are more of the frequent, uh, frequent callers and it kind of comes into question. And again, there's no penalty if they don't get it out because we're willing to turn that truck around at the end of the day and go do it. So I hope this will curb some of that. You know, sometimes people will put it out at the street in a particular area where it's difficult for our trucks to get it and I'll hear over the radio where that will occur and our, our supervisor or superintendent go out and talk to the individual and explain to them there's a guide wire there or, you know, it's a little too close to the parked car on the street that we felt comfortable to try to grab it with the arm, we certainly didn't want to hit your vehicle. Uh, and again, that's another great thing of having this sky eye is we can see real-time exactly what that driver's doing, they force some calls on red and they can pull that up in ten, two minutes. Yeah, we'll see, we'll, we'll take care of the work.
I probably didn't understand correctly, but say I put my dog's can out on Monday morning, which I did. I'd ask, how long have I got to get it back to the?
Oh, twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. I think I got a little bit of a problem with that because when I do that, I have to do that a lot and I always depend on the neighbor getting it in. But, but again, I had found out I didn't do it like, like, weird for them.
And again, we're, we're only looking at this, uh, in a, in a repeat situation where somebody's calling and complaining just because, you know, we drive through a neighborhood and we know it's a chewy route and it's thirsty. We're, we're not gonna go through there and start flagging people unless there's a known concern. Mayor and I've dealt with people who intentionally leave their can at the street all week long. And I have, other than tell them that we have a rollback policy with no enforcement and remind them they need to pull it back, that's, that's the only thing I can do at this time. So again, it's not to go around and flag and try to be.
Just complain to them.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And, and repeat complaint, we'll, you know, we have stickers will identify the policy, explain to them, uh, and go from there.
We've also had situations where a person might own property in the county that he might live in the county and he's got property in the city, but he'll run his county, uh, trash to town with his degree, pretty loose.
We deal with a lot of dumping injuries where those don't exist. We deal with a lot of dumping injuries where those don't exist inside the city and dump it off. We're dealing with that part of the region, too.
If you allow me, I would say a little bit, we were involved in, to reiterate your point, twelve years ago, twelve years we were, we were looking at antacation, and we were, one of the selling points where we provided gar, garbage, we got it. And we had a guy that actually went on local radio, but he didn't really need that, he lived out in Canada, he bought it. He bought it from, uh, Walmart, Kmart, he dumped it in Kmart. So, that was his, he didn't need, he didn't need that, we were paying for it. We had, just a conversation. Push it.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? We have a motion.
Second.
Let's hear the discussion. See none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have consideration of amendment to chapter sixteen, Streets and Sidewalks, add section sixteen-eleven, right-of-way maintenance to City Code or Ordinance, enclosed at five. Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this one, um, you know, truthfully, vast majority of the residents in Raisville probably do this every, each and every day in the summer, right? Um, whether you live on a, what we call a ribbon road with a ditch section, or you live in a curving gutter and maybe a sidewalk, more than likely, each and every one of you mow some portion of our right-of-way for us. Um, but again, we have a few that don't, unfortunately, and, and so, in order to try to resolve this and really truthfully to have some enforcement to mitigate, you know, how much, um, grass clippings and that sort of stuff is blowing right-of-way and then, of course, ends up in storm drain, potentially fog that, we wanted to come up with some language in our maintenance, uh, right-of-way. We have our shrubbery ordinance, which I think many of you are familiar with. That's the only thing we have. So, we wanted some maintenance of the right-of-way in there that ensures clarity, truthfully, that, you know, the grass strip in front of your house, you know, yes, it's in the city's right-of-way, we acknowledge it's in the city's right-of-way, but you're mowing the rest of your yard or asking you to mow that. I don't know any city that goes around with lawn mowers or weed eaters and mows the little foot or two-foot grass strip between the curb and sidewalk. Uh, and so, the language that I drafted, uh, again, I know in some of our meetings, we, we reviewed some very harsh language that certainly might end here, uh, compared to some of our larger municipalities who were doing some interesting things. Um, but we did put some language in here that it is the responsibility of the owner on a developed lot. I want to make sure that's clear, that's one of the languages I put in there. If you have a ten-acre wooded parcel and you have no house on that, you know, like we will, we, because we do some of that, we will maintain that along the road. We're not asking you to bring your mower in on the trail and mow that. But if you have a house in the area or a business, we're asking you to maintain that little strip in front of you so our, our whole, uh, city looks better at the end of the day. We, of course, have streets and we have, um, rep and parks and rep maintenance, but I can't get around to seventy-five hundred, no doubt, many parcels and mow the two-foot grass strip for you, uh, in a week, right, and then get around again. So, we need an abundance of staff and officers to do that. So, so this particular section, uh, clarifies a couple of things that gives the, uh, Public Services Superintendent some, some authority to go out and address these situations and have the backing that's necessary to resolve these on a face-to-face basis, if you will. Um, but again, we're trying to minimize blowing of grass clippings out in the road. We all know that's a concern for motorcycles, but it's also a concern from our storm yard systems, as that can fog those systems. We get a heavy storm and can cause minor flash flooding in the area that could then flood some of our house. And again, we just simply don't have the personnel to mow grass strips and that little edge of right-of-way that you enjoy for your yard.
One, and it's just hypothetical.
Okay.
Okay.
I like hypothetical.
Some people don't like rules and regulations, but let's say I'm the owner of property and I take care of the yard and I have a tenant in that property, but I don't like what the city's doing, so I'm not going to mow that strip. So, is that the occupant, the tenant, or me being the owner, who will be responsible for that strip?
We go with the owner, that's who we're going to say.
Yeah, with the owner, okay.
That's who we're going to say.
All right. So, it, we, because we have the owner, the occupant, and the, um...
More than that.
Yeah, tenant.
I mean, that's the easiest to try to get a hold of in a lot of ways, and that's who we reach out to.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a question? If this works needed, go to it. Take care of some households in the town. Do we have a motion? Second. A motion and second. Any discussion? See none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, on the agenda, consideration of an amendment to section three dash two-seven, Animal Control Officer's Authority to Order Vicious Animals Which Endanger Public, To Be Confined, Destroyed, of the City's Code or Ordinance, enclosed at seven. Chief Ray Gibson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to ask you a little bit, Mr. Wilson, thank you all. Um, it's come to our attention through, it seems like we've had a big rash of dog bites and we had one dog that was, unfortunately, had to be put down, there's something to do with two other dogs attacking it. But, uh, it, it's brought our attention that we don't have the proper language in our ordinance to comply with, uh, general statutes, North Line General Statute sixty-seven, four dash one, sixty-seven, four dash two. The current orders that we have does not define what a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog is, as defined by those general statutes, and it also does not allow for due process for the owners of those dogs to, to have, to, to say, "No, those dogs are dangerous." So, uh, recommend that we, if, if y'all consider that we basically adopt what the North Line statutes is, so that we have those due processes in place and that our animal control officer is to deem a dog dangerous or potentially dangerous so that we can do much better protecting our citizens than other animals in the city.
Any questions? Do you want to add a question? We have, what I have had, what I would set a huge number in less, less than two weeks to say, that, that's the box this year, this last summer, perhaps. No questions, we have a motion.
Your counsel, I may just ask, Chief, would you place a, may we also reiterate to our, uh, public and courts of vaccination of animals in some of the clinics that we offer at a rate that has noticed on some of the unfortunate incidences that have been occurring in our community, several of the animals are unvaccinated, I think that might be something to discuss, if you and council is okay with that.
Absolutely. Every spring, we offer rabies clinic, uh, and I think it's ten dollars for rabies shots. But what we find is, you know, several of these dogs in these cases aren't currently vaccinated. So, then the owners have to surrender their dog for ten-day quarantine at the animal shelter, but the more, the, the more serious side is that if someone gets it, then they have to go through a series of rabies shots. So, it is extremely important for all animals to be up to date with the rabies vaccination and also have proof of that vaccination as part of the ordinance that the animal control officer requests it, and they have to provide proof that their animals have been vaccinated. So, that's extremely important in, in every summer, or every spring, we do have rabies vaccination thing.
Just to reiterate, I think, two of these previous dogs, these dog bites may have started, and two of those have been unvaccinated dogs, at least two.
At, at least two, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's probably more because we just had a big rash and, and unfortunately, I know one gentleman was having to go through the shots and, and that's, that's just not fair to, not fair to the citizens. But, you know, we had loose law, now we have the, uh, the, 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 to our ordinance to, to charge these folks if they do not keep them on lease.
I'm in favor of giving the chief all two of these work with this, but I can tell you, in my years as a landlord, I don't remember one or two dog bites a year in Captain May Avenue. I didn't have one or two dog bites, because I know you had eight the last couple of weeks that I went out with.
And, and, and another problem that, that we run into as police is that the folks aren't reporting it to us. We find out about it when somebody goes to the hospital with a dog bite, or, um, the, the complaint comes in two or three days later, we find out about it. So, it's important for the public to know, we, we report it to us immediately so we can get that report going, then we can get our animal control officer to do what, what she was to do.
Just to add to that, here in Lake, I've noticed that there are more people who transport their dog or walk their dogs who put it, used to be in the past, back when it was, uh, one or two a year.
Yes. Well, with their, with their greenways, which is a great thing, but, you know, that, a lot of people walk them on, uh, on the greenways and, and unfortunately, you know, dogs pass dogs and, and some, again, get aggressive to their owners, and that's just what we're trying to defend and make sure that we make it safe and possible.
A motion. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second. Thank you, Chief.
Any discussion? See none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, consideration of acquisition of property, three-thirty Urban Street, Raisville, and related budget ordinance movement, enclosed at seven. City Manager, something.
Mayor and Council, so what we have before you tonight is city staff, which has been made aware of our, by local legislature, Mr. Bruce McCullough, uh, this is a theoretical property located at three-thirty Urban Street, which is across from the penthouse, is now available for purchase. And we at city staff believe it would be possibly in the best interest of our city council or mayor, we consider allowing the city to purchase that property, given that we are expanding, um, the penthouse and putting in a, an event center there. We do see the need for adding additional property, per se, the parking, and this property could be a great addition to help with that. Um, the thirty thousand is the purchase price of the properties that are listed with the road or ordinance, and the related cost of fees, insurance, tax, the insurance fringe the total price up to thirty-one thousand five hundred. If it would be desired or bannered, council, we have attached a budget ordinance to purchase this property if it is your desire.
What is the tax, uh, what is the way that is tax, which one?
I'll defer our attorney, my lawyer, to twenty-six thousand.
Three-three was property close to three, I don't think all in, well, and what three-thirty was, which passed by.
I want to support it, but I think I'd feel more comfortable if I knew the tax that it was.
Sure. And I, I'll ask our Assistant City Mayor, I know that you guys have done a lot of work on this, did you, I know you have researched that, Mr. Phillips, do you have that exact number?
I don't remember.
Again, to what, to Sherbrooke?
Um, I don't remember, I had your back in time.
Well, to the man, because I, staff will do a quick search and watch them, kind of tax office, provide this much information.
No, that would be a problem. The city attorney is, you're typically, yeah.
You can apologize, there have been a few problems we've been working on, I know that this is the one.
I feel, I most, I might as well be in sports motion, I'd be more comfortable if I knew what the tax was.
Certainly, yes.
I think, oh, yeah, but could we move on? We have to get to the question, though.
Yes, we'll be told a board and a commission appointment next, enclosed at here. While we're waiting. Fifteen thousand four twenty-five.
Mr. Attorney, this is the bill that I believe there was, um, the city was aware this property is well, there's been a lien based on its fires, is that correct?
That is correct. Fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five, there was a lien on the property, well, possibly way from twenty-two thousand.
This is the property we've been discussing, uh, for quite some time, that if it ever found available in the city, that would be considerable for the city.
Fifteen dollars.
The office would be to talk, talk to emergency patients, we would be to order additional parking in the penthouse. We did something a lot.
I don't know that, I've had some discussions pretty about the lien in the car.
Um, then, we, you tell me, what's the value of that?
The tax file is fifteen-four twenty-five. There's a lien against, I don't have, I don't have any information with it, what that, but it was like a twenty-two thousand dollar lien, I guess, file.
The, the city had placed that lien on there, that's the, the property we talked about for several months. The city had placed that lien on there several, several years ago, I believe. Mr. Sherbrooke, if you wanted to speak on that, but it was, I believe, the property was actually demolished at some point.
It was, it was demolished, um, and that was the amount of demolition, along with, um, several charges to maintain the, no.
Who's the whole of the lien?
The law.
Citizens.
The law.
I'm guessing a little bit confused, so the five billion that we pay, this thirty, they only get, they don't get, they don't get eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars.
There's a motion.
So, the...
Second. A motion and a second, two seconds. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Good question, please.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Public comments? And we have anyone who'd like to come forward and speak for council tonight? See no one? We'll move to the management report.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. I'll try to move through quickly, um, despite for our time tonight. Uh, we are advertising for a cohesion inspections officer. The city of Raisville, um, is hiring and replacing the insured Charles Williams. His last day was Friday, September the twenty-ninth, and we wish him nothing but the best on his future endeavors. Also, as an update for our economic development director search, we're continuing to work with, uh, Mac and his firm, and do have some potential candidates we'll be interviewing in upcoming weeks. Couple of projects and city updates for the month, just really want to push this out there for the Sessboz and the Tino celebration for the month of October. Open house at Governor Reed House will be on Saturday, October twenty-first, from two to five P.M. And then also on Saturday, October twenty-first, from eleven A.M. to seven P.M., we'll have the Food, Art and Brew, otherwise known as the Bath Festival in downtown Raisville. There will be a concert during the festival, and the band will be the Tams. And then we'll also have the Downtown Trigger Tree event, which will be Friday, October twenty-seventh, from four P.M. to six P.M., with a free movie called Hotel Transylvania, the show at Market Square at six-thirty. Then there will also be an open house at Lake Raisville on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from noon to three, followed by a haunted show event from five P.M. to nine-thirty. Also, the Halloween doll costume contest, your daddy's art fair, from ten to eleven A.M. on Monday, October the thirtieth. Uh, that is a very fun event to attend. Um, flashpad, uh, do you have a little bit of uncertain news at this point? We are trying to report with the project, but we are starting to see a couple of delays.
We are trying to report with the project, but we are starting to see a couple of delays with some of the products, so we're continuing to monitor that, so just want to make you aware of that. Uh, the penthouse building project is moving along very well, um, we've got several things that have been completed there that I've noted or reported. And then I also want to give a huge shout out, uh, to all of city staff that work on the ball displays downtown. Um, if it wasn't for our public works, uh, parks and rec facility staff, they would have loved and be on with this project. Uh, also a special thank you to Hector Ramirez, Jacob Drenn, and Lindsay Tubbell for designing the pumpkin tree that you'll see at Market Square. And then also to Yarber, Rob and Not, uh, Andy Stone, Donald Carroll, Josh Beck, Jason Hart, and Drew Nigolo, Neil McKinney, and Denise Homs for their great assistance in creating the downtown displays that you see. So that is all possible witnesses of the ladies and gentlemen that are part of our team, so if you see them, please, gentlemen, thank you. Couple more announcements, um, we're really excited to report that Senator Phil Burger and Representative Reese Pearl secured funding for the city of Reevesville in this year's budget. Funding includes the Piedmont, Amyton, Wayswater Fallout for one point six million, and twenty-one million dollars for Rocky County for the extension of water services for Reevesville for its unincorporated media platform. And then also, um, a special thank you to both Senator Phil Burger and Representative Reese Pearl for the three hundred thousand dollars they were able to secure us for our parks and rec projects, such as the tennis courts that we've been working on with some grant funding, and then also, uh, pickleball courts, and possibly looking at the replacement of the gym at our parks and rec facility. So more to come on that. Two more quick updates, and I do want to give a shout out to our H.R. department, I think they've done an exceptional job with their employee orientation, and I think they started it, well, they started it in September, and I had the, uh, privilege to attend. I think by doing a monthly new employee orientation, it shows just how invested we are in our employees and welcoming to the team, and hopefully being able to go over some of the benefits that we offer, so we're doing a better job of communicating versus doing that more on the, um, um, so I'm very excited for H.R. to roll out that, that tool for us. And then finally, um, more to report on this, but I would like to give a shout out to our I.T. staff. Um, we will be doing some I.T. upgrades, uh, probably in November, which is desperately needed. So we no longer will have awkward TV that has to be turned around for the public and us. So we're very excited in the next month, month and a half, to be able to provide some updated equipment for our viewers and our residents to be able to see exactly what council sees, and then also for council to be able to see, um, the itinerary as well, so. With that, that concludes my report, thank you.
Oh, see man, may I give a double tap, not really a triple tap, I mean, all decorations.
Absolutely.
How are these gorgeous, fantastic? And I've gotten so much, uh, this college, and this, and ladies, citizens in general. So thank all those have, the bar.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that, it'd be good teamwork.
To echo what he just said, if, if you drive the Rockskill Street, uh, downtown Reevesville on, on a Friday afternoon, or Sunday, you see people standing out in front of the decorations, taking pictures and, and, and I've stopped and asked a few people, or they're filming, or they're from all around, not just Reevesville people, but everybody, and everybody's asking.
We thought I didn't play a bird, that I done built this.
Your pro temp?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'd just like to, uh, utilize my time to honor, uh, the member of the good president, uh, Mr. William Bell, who was the co-director of Reevesville Senior High School for twenty-nine years. Just outstanding person, uh, very talented, one of the most talented musicians and directors of everything. Uh, her students that performed in the land of Florida, Carnegie Hall in New York, and Angela Bahamas, and all throughout the state of, uh, just outstanding individual. Mayor, I want to compliment you on your remarks, and the home women, uh, celebrations that outstanding is at.
I said, well, something about, about my remarks, too. They told us we only had two minutes to speak, and I guess I kind of got a little wound up up there.
Yeah.
And the preacher had. Uh, Father Dave, your name?
Mayor and Council, I'd like to report on my, what I attended this September, but I'd also like to take this time to thank the, um, the regional chamber for what they did, and the event they had today was outstanding. On September the ninth, I attended the Pride Thunder Day, which was really interesting because they did a lot of happy events for the city. And on September the nineteenth, I attended the reason of the RDC community business meeting. On September the twentieth, I attended any plan, uh, special board meeting, where we talked a little bit about the future of, um, what's going to happen in the area. And then on the twenty-sixth, there was a ribbon cutting at the country club. There's also, on the twenty-seventh, I attended the spark N.C., River Two Washington ribbon cutting. And these were young people who were using their eyes and using technology. Um, and on September the twenty-eighth, I attended the ZM for the N.C. group. Thank you.
Diane? So I don't get.
Thank you all, I apologize for my tardiness, so thank you for, my forecourters. Thank you, Governor, Officer, and the rest for being here and my absence. Um, we have had some really great things happen, and I have something I wanted to share with you all. I wanted to say that the ribbon cutting today, um, but it's not, it's not really my story to tell, and I didn't have permission ahead of time, and I, so I didn't want to say anything, and I, I spoke to them afterward, so I'll share with you so that you notice, and especially for those of you who maybe didn't get to go by, um, it's very, um, very coincidental, I guess, and appropriate that the, uh, La Boca Loco opened in October, because I'm sure as all of you are aware, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And breast cancer is the reason that we have La Boca Loco, because they have been fighting for years and just didn't want to make that step out in faith, and when George's wife got diagnosed with breast cancer, they decided that it was time, and when she was, they said, we're going to beat this, and we're going to open this restaurant, and we're going to do this. And they actually had these ribbons that they forgot to give out today. So I gave you permission to tell you that story, but please, if you get the opportunity, they are the kindest people I think I have ever met in my life, and they're the greatest family. So please be sure to go by there and just welcome them and thank them, because it, it's truly amazing what they're doing. Um, I, it's the best part of my job, it really is. I have, uh, tons of events, I won't, I won't Terry all those, but I have a couple that I want to point out. Um, obviously, uh, we have the Bad Festival coming up, and we are in desperate need of volunteers for that. Um, so please help us spread the word, um, both up in Devil's Street, at all the RDC, uh, booths and things that they need, but also the chamber. So we are trying to help spread the word to that. The candidate forum will be on October twenty-third, at six P.M. at the Reevesville Event Center. Uh, we sent mail invitations last week, and we've heard back from most everybody, um, and RSCPs. And then, obviously, our biggest event of the year, the Business Expo and Job Fair, that is on Thursday the twenty-sixth, um, from two P.M. to seven thirty, at Reevesville Christian Church. Um, you are all welcome to come to our VIP luncheon from eleven thirty to one thirty, I just need those RSCPs as soon as possible, so we can plan for that accordingly, thank you for those that I've heard from. Um, big upcoming, uh, ribbon cuttings, we have several coming, but I wanted to point out, um, the Reevesville Reapers. That is their inaugural game, and he just brought me, um, the schedules today. So if you need the schedule, stop by and have them in visitor's center, um, but Brady, he dropped those off. So we're going to do the ribbon cutting at the gym of RCC at noon, and then the game starts at one. Um, hospice is going to be countywide, they're dropping a new name and logo and just all the things. Still the same hospice, but just going to give an upgrade on that. Um, and then the November coffee, um, a lot of confusion, we canceled the October coffee because of the two-day envisioned expo event. It was truly amazing, um, all the seventh graders, both homeschool, charter school, public school, and then the tenth graders came to the two-day event that we had at RCC, and it was really phenomenal, um, and so we didn't have an October coffee, but November will be hosted by the Belmont Mansion, and it is a ribbon cutting and coffee connection. So that is on Thursday, November the second, at nine, eight A.M., so. I hope that you were all able to attend that, and I am very thankful, thank you for the time, and that is all for me, sir. Thank you.
Uncle Harris? Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, on, uh, six ju, uh, uh, September the sixteenth, I attended the, uh, S.M.K. Free Love, uh, Scholarship Fund. Ray Motee was a hell of a time back church, and, uh, they raised, uh, right at ten thousand dollars. And, uh, each year, uh, they give scholarship money out to, uh, different students within Rocky County. They're doing a great job, and they're got a lot of support by, uh, people in Rocky County, especially Reevesville, so. Five to ten. And then on September the nineteenth, I attended the WACP, um, monthly, uh, meeting, uh, that was, uh, Zoom. And then on twenty, September twenty-third, uh, attended Relay for Life, and, uh, we were kind of walking, and kind of doing it. And, uh, we certainly enjoyed that, and just so proud of the survivors, the citizens that survived. Um, also attended my family day, and, uh, it was, uh, well attended. And then on September the twenty-fifth, uh, attended Minister Alliance Meeting, and that was also held at East Line Baptist Church. And then on September the twenty-sixth, attended the Human Relations Commission Meeting, we had a full house. So it was just good to see, uh, a full house where the, uh, the seats, the banquet seats, uh, have been filled. And they've got some great planning and things that they're going to be doing in the condition. Then on October third, I attended the McAllen Park, uh, neighborhood watch meeting, special guest list, uh, of this city. Got away, uh, planning for the homeless shelter, uh, uh, being, uh, the records, so, uh, in, uh, Brentford. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, usually, I do not read everything that I have done, uh, but I want you to think, don't think that I have been resting on my laurels. So I will go quickly, clerk, I will turn the dates into you, but let's go real fast for this last month. Um, and before I do that, I want to thank everyone who came this evening, some of our visitors have already left, we appreciate your time, for coming, and then, uh, kudos and thanks beyond, well, anything I could say for everybody that had a part in today's plan. So thank you so much. Um, first of all, I'm going to start with the Anne Ruston Neighborhood Sale, ribbon cutting for career at the middle school, the score career day. Battle for the Cup, um, Mayor and I were actually referees on that, that wonderful day, along with our past fire chief. Uh, relay for Walk of Life, ribbon cutting for Pinrose Park Country Club, the boat tour for Murray's Point, A.B. Seaboard Meeting, Appearance Committee, retirement for Jason Julian, who retired from, uh, D.O.T. Designating for, designation for the Marco for Susie Sharp, which is up the street here, across from Main Street Church. Ribbon cutting for Henley CPR Services, McGloran Community Watch, Coffee with a Cop, and that was held at Warrior Nutrition. Uh, meeting greet at Shay Lindsey, a ribbon cutting for La Boca, and then pleasure of the, um, regional event. And Diane talked about the wonderful family at La Boca. She did not mention how wonderful the samples were today, and their grand opening is tomorrow, so, um, please go out, they are, they're such a lovely family, and how connected they are. There were even relatives that came all the way from Miami today for their ribbon cutting. So, um, just appreciate everybody who had a hand in getting them exactly where they are, and I can't wait to belly up to the bar. So thank you, Mayor.
I'm sure you've noticed that Councilwoman Stobbe, looking here, the manager of the world.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I try not to reiterate what's already been said, but I think a couple of points I'd like to make. Uh, first of all, the downtown was absolutely fantastic. If anyone had been up to do it, or maybe listening tonight, please take the opportunity to do that. What I found is, my dog really loves it, and a friend of mine, her dog, we go down and have, uh, selling, being there, gingers, and eat, eat our gingers in there. So it's been really nice and well, and really invited us to do that, so we very much appreciate it. I know it's a little bad for this man, my dog loves it. Today, uh, and again, I'm repeating myself, but they was a very special day in the life of our city. The mayor, staff, you guys knocked yourself out today, you really made it special. And I only felt it, some folks ignore you, but I know why some of us get emotional, we talk about today, but it, it was brilliant. And I can't tell you how much, I will always be indebted to you for the way you knocked yourself out today, you made it very special. Fire, police, public works, city staff, I don't know anybody that didn't go beyond what, what, what I expected to happen today, but, uh, it was all going to be something that I will trade. Thank God bless, thank you. May God bless and envy with you, thank you.
Most of what everyone has done, in reference to ribbon cuttings and, and other chamber events I've, I've been part of. And we have a closed session tonight, and we've got a lot to go on, so we're not going to go down the list of items that I have. Come on down.
Let's look if we can get that.
But I want to echo what, uh, Chief said just a moment ago. It just shows that Team Reevesville is, is a team. And it shows Team Reevesville loves this city, loves the citizens of this city. And it shows that we will go beyond the call of duty to take care of the needs of our citizens here. I truly appreciate it, too, what you did today. And that family will never forget what we've done. Josh, I said especially to you, because you spent most of the time, he wanted to be you. And I'm sure you made it happen for him today. One of the preachers at our church would, would often say, if you can't say anything else, you can say nothing. And I say that. And we love them all. And I do have the, you know, it was only one person.
Okay, uh, there was only one, uh, person for our application for the Regional Appearance Commission, Jason Johnson, seven no, non-South Main Street, and he was unanimously.
We're going to move to the first floor conference room for a closed session to discuss economic development and real estate pursuant to N.C.G.S. one four three dash three one eight, point eleven A, one four two five. And, uh, we won't be coming back out. We'll turn the chambers, do I have a most people in.
So who?
Sarah.
Get in discussion. Raise your right hand, and we'll be heading into the closing. Thank you all.